Okay, acting's happy for July 17. Take a break to read the minutes and then I'll enter the motion.
You guys want to leave the air so it can...
Oh, they'll show up probably, I bet.
I don't think so.
But just showing us a light block to flip the coin, that is, could give us five.
It's all right, because it'll be better if...
I'll just put a picture of those two up there.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
That's what we should do.
Yeah.
Nice.
Not here.
Right, you know?
I can't read all the minutes, so I'm not important at this point.
You weren't here.
That's right. Yeah, it's gotta be checked right now.
Yeah.
Oh, bummer. All right, I'm going to read seven minutes for the stated June 19th. Any changes or corrections? All's in favor, I am?
Aye.
Oh, the supposed name? Don't do it. Okay. Number one for old business, Ash Cove Construction. Have we got somebody here?
Ah, that's me.
All right, so, what's the game plan here? What are we looking at?
Well...
The primaries?
Yep, one primary. And I think what we first is, I'm just gonna read off the project description, existing conditions and proposed development map. Existing, the subject parcel is a 9.9 acre lot, it's mostly wooded with a mix of hardwood and softwood trees, medium to large size. We're set into this in the fifth and sixth line strictly on State Route 109, with old roof that still exists. Lots approximately 466 feet frontage on State Route 109 and 1,030 feet on 12th Street, which is the parter road. Roadway width on 12th Street is presently 30 feet. The gravel road approximately 20 feet wide, flat and in very good condition for its entirety. 12th Street currently serves as access to 28 lots, including those on Aston Lane. 12th Street does connect to Avenue A, however, the lots along Avenue A do not have deed to rights to 12th Street. Parcel itself rises up from 12th Street towards the center of the lot. Along State Route 109, the land is flat for the first 100 and 150 feet and rises. The soils are all cold and gravelly, low knee course, excessively well drained and deep. Parcel is divided in the only half by its own line. The front bordering Route 109, and the commercial aid district, and the back in the rural district. So, for the proposed development of 12th Street acres, we want to do a four lot subdivision, lots. I'm not sure if you have the full plan. So... Back three lots, lot 2-2, 2-3, 2-4, all about two acres in size, on the rural district will be used as lots of single-family homes. These lots will have suggested clearing limits that maintain a minimum of 25 foot buffers from law boundaries, 50 feet between the road and the clearing, and at least 25 feet between the clearing and the budding properties. This will preserve over half the area and each of these lots is forested. Lot 2-1, which fronts State Route 109, will be used for commercial building. It's not yet been determined the type of commercial use that the lots by the lot. However, the applicant will submit a full site plan application into back to planning board for their review once the type of commercial plan is determined. All also individual self-circus wastewater disposal systems, individual wells. So, one thing that John mentioned to me that kind of came up last night was lot 2-3. The minimum frontage wasn't met, but all that happened there was one of the... The courses was missing off the plan, the 7.97 foot...
Just wasn't on there, maybe?
Yeah, it just wasn't on there, so it does have to act with the frontage. A couple of things that we've done, I'm not sure how much of this has been gone over already or not. Instead of the 30-foot roadway on 12th Street, we've widened it to 50 foot for all these lots to conform to zoning and everything, so... You know, we're taking the more cautious step, we're...
Is the land owned to the center of the road, though?
On 12th Street?
What are the property lots, what other dimensions of the property, where exactly does it go to?
Property, actually, we didn't get into a whole lot with this, but I believe what the current owner owns is actually the remaining piece of land. That's all of, all this whole subset, these other lots down here and the front, the ones along Lake, all came out of that, and it's all the remaining rights. So, I believe they actually own the whole road, all the way up to that fairground land. And this, I'm not positive, but can, could be fairground driving down along towards A Street as well, so... They have more ownership than...
If they don't... So, this white strip on the east side of 12th Street?
Yep.
Is that owned by each one of these lots, or no? If it's not owned by the lots, then they don't physically abut the street, correct?
They do physically abut the street. These lots' ownership actually does go through that right of way. But what we're suggesting is making a 50-foot roadway instead of the current 30-foot lot.
Yeah, all right.
Part of that is, because you can see 12th Street lot shut all the way to one side, and even the utility lines aren't even on that right of way. So, that's part of why we wanted to push it 50 feet. Make everything more performant.
All right. Have you got pins in here?
These, I believe, are 2B set.
Okay, because if we plan to take a sidewalk, we want to see that.
Yep. No, I don't think we've actually gone out here and set anything in that, so... The other funky thing that John pointed out and said to mention to you was the setbacks in lot 2-2, where they kind of do this weird thing where 50 feet into the commercial district...
Oh, it's got the slope?
Yeah, it's holding the rural district zoning regulations, setbacks. I don't have that information with me, where exactly it says that we can do that. That's something that John informed me about. And that's why it's set up like that. So, you know, it's 125 feet up to 50 feet within that lot. I'm trying to think of anything else that you really kind of pointed out to mention right off the bat.
What is the required road frontage in this rural district here?
Looks like rural minimum frontage is 250 feet.
Well, does this say 229.7? I'm looking at lot 2-3.
Yep, there's 229.76.
Oh, there's a 13 up here, and then this 8, okay, okay.
Yeah, and that 8 was missing on the last.
Yes, gotcha, gotcha, all right, all right. All right, gotcha. So, you're looking for approval for the whole subdivision, but right now, you're only planning on three house lots to develop now. You're gonna, you plan on coming back to the board in the future when you have a plan for the commercial lot, is that the story?
Yep, nothing's gonna be happening with the commercial lot right now. Ash Cove Construction only has a... A purchase and sales agreement for this, they actually don't have, right? So, part of that deal is, he's gonna build these lots, and that money is going to go in exchange for actually buying the land and make the title go to whoever does buy these. So, that's why he wants to do these three lots and use some of that money for that commercial lot. He wants to kind of do it in two phases.
12th Street is a private road, correct?
Yep.
Is there some kind of homeowners association? How are they gonna deal with maintenance of the road, that type of business? These three lots, or four lots? Or they probably have to join the existing homeowners association, road association? They wouldn't have that on, yeah, okay, all right.
How do you get to expand the road from 30 feet to 50?
We're expanding the right of way. The road, the existing road and conditions won't be changed at all. Because we actually, or the parcel has ownership all the way up to that 30-foot right of way. You know, all the existing lots that have these roads would only still have that 30 feet. Just these four lots will have that 50-foot right of way.
So essentially, you're just basically cutting into these, this property to add the 20 feet, is what you're saying?
Yeah, and you know, that's just being more conservative for these lots.
And who determines that the quality of this additional 20 feet is comparable to what you say is the good road already on the existing 30 feet? Is that the road commissioner?
What do you mean, is comparable?
Well, the quality of the right of way, the road itself, that you're seemingly going to create.
Well, the existing road and the conditions aren't wanting to change. We're still gonna use the existing gravel road utilities coming off of it and everything. It's just going to be, you know, that's for any type of driveway access, stuff like that. They need to get through that 20 feet.
Right, I guess what I'm really asking is, is the quality of that 20 feet, the quality of the sand, the soil, or whatever, is that comparable to what everybody drives on now?
I don't think they're gonna actually expand the road.
Yeah, the road width won't be changed at all.
Oh, I'm missing something, I'm sorry.
It's just someone that's... If you were to show them on the road, they could do that thing.
They're not letting anybody, nobody can build in that section!
Okay.
No, homeowners may just own it, but they just can't. Doing it to the lights, yeah.
I misunderstood that, even last time, I thought that was gonna be common.
I don't know that you guys would have to do that.
Right of way is a 30-foot right of way.
30s were 50s.
I think this is one of the things we don't have to, but we are, to be safe. You know, there's no black area up here, we're not crunching anything to fit anything in, so... Prefer to make it 50 feet. Are there any other questions that pop up right off of that?
So, you're proposing all four lots are gonna be logged at the same time to make the envelopes, or?
I'm not positive what the plan is on that.
Maybe just the three initially, and then the one later, or?
I think that's something that I'll have to ask Scott about.
How big are the envelopes you have to leave out in there?
The lighter green?
That's the building envelope?
Yeah, the white line is the building envelope, and the lighter green is just a suggested clearing limit.
Oh, okay, right.
And you know, these, these coming down to the road aren't necessarily exactly where the driveway is gonna go.
Yeah.
It was something that...
It's approximate.
Yeah.
These two, it's gonna probably be in the middle of the lot, though.
Yeah, the only thing is with that, with that top lot, our restricted...
That's a rated restricted lot?
Yeah, it comes off kind of steep, but I guess the plan, like Scott said, that what the plan is is actually tight into that back way to make that house, so anywhere along that road frontage would be, you had to go to sort of driveway.
I guess, well... Oh, okay. So, less restrictive can't be more than 50 feet into the road, is it? What is your first name?
Jacob.
Jacob, sorry, I didn't understand. Can you go over briefly that little expansion of the restrictions of the less restrictive lot, in this case, which is 2-2, that are, can be moved at 50 feet even the more restrictive lot, which is 2.1. What is it actually you're trying to... What conditions are you trying to make less restrictive?
The only thing, the real reason for that is to get the building envelope closer to the road. You know, the side setbacks and the rear setback, well, the rear setback is, you know, it doesn't cross that zoning. But with the side setbacks being 25 feet, that's why it kind of comes down to is that jog to the 50 feet, which is the commercial. But...
This is large, this is...
Maybe just rain. Make it so that building envelope can be closer to the road.
I see, so you've got, you've got 75 feet for X distance, and then it jumps up to 125?
Yeah, the 125 is, is from the commercial.
Yep.
And the 50 on the side is from the commercial.
Yep.
And all of these setbacks are from the center of that 50-foot right of way.
Yep, yep, okay, understood, thank you. Are you coming to us, and what you spoke of really, Jacob, is a little confusing whether you're coming to us with a three-lot subdivision or a four-lot subdivision?
We're, we're coming with a four-lot subdivision.
Okay.
But, but with that, nothing's gonna be happening with that commercial lot until we come back.
Got you. All right, so we're gonna need to do a sidewalk out there first, and it'd be nice to have flags out there.
Yep.
We don't, we don't necessarily need the ones, every contour are changing along the road. We just need the pins at the corners of the lots.
Okay.
Front and back. Yeah. Now, whenever you think that might be done, then we can set up our road, our sidewalk.
Okay.
So... When do you think that might be able to happen?
Um...
Offhand?
Offhand, probably... I would guess we could get to it either later this coming week or the following week. We could get out there and we'd probably be able to set off times. I'm not positive about that, it may just be...
They just have to be flags right now, we don't need anything permanent. Just to give us an idea of where the lot lines are and how these things look.
Okay.
So we can walk around to there.
Okay, so would you want the lot lines going through as well? Or just where they intersect the road?
Where they intersect the road, and I don't know if we're gonna want like one or two in the middle of the lots going to the back. I forget exactly if we... Yeah, I suppose we want them at the points of each lot, in the front and in the back. And maybe like just one or two along this span, just so somebody walked back there, they could stay on ultimately a straight line.
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
But again, doesn't have to be anything fancy yet, just to stick with a bunch of flags so we get an idea of what we're looking at. Because right now, even though you're bringing us an alleged preliminary plan, we're still looking at this as part of the site plan review. You know, because we haven't done the sidewalk yet. So, we haven't decided if, you know, we're gonna need special contours back out there, although better relatively flat probably not. And if there's anything that jumps out at us when we get out there that we want to address before you get too involved in doing all these plans, you know?
Correct.
And the site plan, or sketch plan phase doesn't start the clock running yet, which can end up putting us both at a disadvantage down the road. It'll, the clock starts once we accept the preliminary plan and then start marching along from there. And so, we'll set up a sidewalk, we'll go out there, take a look, see if there's anything that jumps out at us and we want to add to this. And then from that, we'll accept a preliminary plan and we'll start the whole long process. Because this is gonna be a major subdivision, because it's more than three lots.
Yep.
All right, which means, you know, just more hoops to jump through. Jacob, I got one question for you on the note down in the lower left-hand corner, you notice the, the 50-foot setback. Are you with me?
I'm trying to find where that is.
We're looking at lot 1. 1, 2, 1. 2-1. You see that where the 50 feet has been noted there?
Yep, that's, that's the width of the right of way.
Right. And that dash line, I'm just curious, what is your understanding of fairgrounds property line? Is, is on that most, we'll call it northwesterly line, the dash line that's...
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that long dash line is the property line of fairgrounds.
Okay, and the dotted line is what, chain link fence or something?
Uh, yes, the circles, yeah, that's chain, that's all.
And there's no, no... There's a clear understanding between you folks in the situation that that is in the situation?
Yes, yeah, there's a, a recorded plan of the fairgrounds, and that's actually how we got our property line back on there.
Great, okay.
What's the dotted line with the property line? The rail small dogs, it crosses over the right of way.
Chain link fence, right?
No, no, it's just a contour.
Oh, maybe the flag runs through here? The 520?
No, it's the, right next to the dash line and the chain link fence, it comes, it starts at the left of the...
Is that a contour?
Oh, here it is.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's, it's the power lines.
That's the power line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's the utility lines run out through there.
That's the power line, and how's the purple one?
Uh, the purple one is the center of the 50-foot.
Okay.
And so that's where we did our setbacks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit clustered here.
Who actually owns the land, the right of way goes over?
This property actually owns that land.
As far back as the property goes?
Yes, they own, they got all the remaining rights in the, in the land. The other thing before we go too far is waivers that we're requesting too. Probably all of those.
What agency owns it?
It's, felt halfway through, it's, it's got its own, well, I got a waiver request. So, these are the two that are requesting. One's the high intensity soils survey. And I don't know where exactly it is in the packet, but it's a little bit further back, it's an eleven letter. We're just past eleven letter, the soil ports.
Oh, okay.
It's all really great green soil, so that's hard to trust in that area. And that's where all of the test codes were great. Only factor was over 4 feet. And then the second one was hydrogeologic assessment. And the reason we're asking to waive that, being though on the sandy gravel, gravel off earth, the average density was less than 100,000 square feet per dwelling unit. I'm not so sure why, where exactly going to grab this, but... Yeah, the, uh, looks like what it was for the average density was actually 107,800 approximately per lot.
Pardon me? Uh, well, the high intensity soil survey is one that can be waived. And hydrogeologic assessment can be waived, it's on page 19 of your subdivision report. United States wants you, what you need to, what we need to... That's not something we can do tonight, anyway. The only thing that would impinge on that, I think, was the usage, I think, to which they put 2.1, but they've got a lot, as Jacob said, that suddenly they, they realized already it's an active protection district. So that would be your defining criterion there for what uses, you know, to some degree.
Yeah, and you know, it wouldn't be any type of dwelling on that, yeah, right, so.
To what, at what point do we have to grant the letters? How we requested to grant them, United States? Yeah, well, after, after the site, after we do the sidewalk, and once we get to the point where we accept the preliminary plan, then if we're gonna grant a waiver, we, or waivers, we do it after. Because that's all stuff that they would need for the final.
Are you, do waivers apply on all four lots, or just the three should be officially looked at?
Probably all four.
I believe it's all four.
So it depends kind of on what, what kind of commercial development occurred in the front lot, whether or not we want to waive?
Well, not...
Well, at that point, it's not gonna be any more dwelling unit, there isn't gonna be any more residential on that lot, so...
And they have to remind, like, the language in the protection district and on the land use line of uses that would... And when they have a plan for a commercial lot, they're, they're gonna come back to us then?
I was just wondering, since those little lots are in different stages, you know?
Yeah. And we, it would, if they had something planned for the commercial lot that we felt we needed a hydrogeologic study, we could have that do with that.
That would need to feel with it.
Well, no, because we could say when we grant the waiver that we may hold on...
Yeah.
You know? You know, for 2-1, we may want to revisit that when they come to us with the final plan for that lot. Because the waiver doesn't have to be blank, we can...
Right, yeah.
We can make conditions on it. So, um, today's, uh... Well, we couldn't get it done and get out there by the first meeting in August.
Which is the 7th.
Our second meeting in August is the...
The first, it's the...
First is a Friday.
So, that's, so, 7, 21, then. If we could get out there a week before the 21st, if that was done, so that we could have made the sidewalk and then get back together with you at our second meeting in August, which will be the 21st. Then we could, you know, keep the ball rolling. Now, do you think that you guys can have the pins out there, flag? Now, do you think that you guys can have the pins out there, flags? Why say the first week of August?
Yeah, we should be able to do that. Are you talking the first week, are you talking the first full week, or are you talking the week that has August first on it?
No, it'll probably be the first full week of August.
You gotta do it on August first, you say.
And I thought he was gonna have it done this week or?
If we, if we, if we went out there anytime between, uh, the tenth of August and the sixteenth, that's a whole week in there, and that's the second full week of August. And then we could still discuss it on the, uh, our next meeting, which will be the twenty-first. Does anyone have any issues with the week of the tenth of August? You could be out of town, vacation, sick, doctors, dentist, work, get out. Do we want to do it on a weekend or a week evening? This is still kind of light.
Only evening, evening.
Yeah, alright.
So could we do Mondays before, didn't we?
I know we've done all kinds of, whatever it works. Monday, Monday's good for you? Monday the tenth, or wouldn't that be the eleventh?
Well, it may not be, I'm coming back from Quebec.
I couldn't do Monday.
No? What's Tuesday like?
I could do anything.
Tuesday, that would be Tuesday the twelfth.
It's after six.
Still, I'll be late enough to see, it's not like we're going to spend hours out there. After six or at six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Six oh.
Want to do it six thirty? Six thirty on the, uh, twelfth of August. I'm sure we'll all forget or something come up, but that's what we're shooting for. We'll need to put a notification.
I'll see.
Yeah, that's alright, we need the time for that anyway, so that'll work out. So, you got between now and then, get some flags out there.
We can do that.
And, uh, so we'll go out, we'll take a look, we'll walk around, see if there's anything we want to add, you know, see if there's going to be any issues with the contours. Um, the test pits, we'll be able to see those because they're, they've already been done, correct?
Yep.
Alright. Alright, how's that sound for everybody?
Good.
Good.
Any more questions or issues with the, the information we have right now? From anyone?
Would you guys want to mark the line of the commercial and rural district forces with one flag on the road there?
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
Might be interesting, I don't know what part of the league that, it'd be interesting to see it.
Yeah, just to see how it hits on that piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's one thing looking here, but when we see the piece of property. Alright, okay?
Alright.
I think we're all set then. Thanks for coming in, we'll see, hopefully, somebody from you guys on the, uh, whatever date it's, the twelfth, six thirty. Alright, thanks for coming in, thank you, we'll see you later.
Get my bag.
Alright, what's next? Stormwater. Everybody get a chance to read the first six pages? Good, because I did, because I heard the roof. So the only people that have to school me on this.
Yeah, the next one, that's just.
Okay, who wants to start? Start with the first page, section one. Okay. The first sentence, is it all new construction or just new construction within these three, uh, zones?
In the affected zones.
Yeah.
Alright, well, let's see that in there sometime.
Must be worse than something as well.
Yeah, just.
Ah, but this first sentence is all new construction and development, it's got to be, right here, it's got to say it.
You had a good suggestion last time, that after the, on that first line, after the phrase stormwater runoff, um, we might insert the phrase from the applicable zones, or insert the zones.
I don't think, whatever, whatever works.
Applicability is up on page, uh, five.
Now, is the purpose down here at five twenty-five, two, one, one, the same as the original? Or is it all zero?
From, uh, existing language?
Yeah, from Feb. two twelve to May. five fourteen.
I think it's new language.
Well, it looks to me like A and B look to be the same.
Those are different words.
Oh, yeah, C's, okay.
Is that really the purpose?
What's your name, you're kidding?
No, I mean, is, I mean, is.
If that were to be the purpose.
The real purpose is protecting the environment, conserving the natural cultural resources of town. Secondary purpose is not, you know, maybe it was for the.
So you want the purpose to be more succinct? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I think the, you know, the purpose is to protect the water quality. The more, the more, the less worried you are about that, I think that's. But that said, some people put a lot of time, work and get to this, to this point. And I'm a little hesitant to nitpick if they know that. We're not supposed to nitpick, we're just supposed to create any more words, so if you want to bring in some new words.
Yeah, I think with less words.
I think less words.
Yeah, a lot of things, saying fewer words, so if we want to truncate this thing.
Yeah.
Go for it.
But I mean, to, to me, the purpose is to protect the environment, the water quality and the environment.
Yeah, work on it.
Yeah, or, you know, two lines instead of four, that would be sweet.
Alright.
Because you don't say, you know, A, B, C, and D really are addressing water quality. Had nothing to do with safety.
Well, between now and next minute, it's like zoning ease, you know? Put together a sentence or two. Of this. I give you time, man. No, 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 hey. I mean, we could spend all night here picking.
That's why I was trying to.
Not good, I know, that's why whoever brings up something, um.
We're pretty close.
Let's have a plan too.
Seems like you're pretty close to us.
I have a question.
Yes, shoot.
The word ordinance, this isn't an ordinance, it's, it's an article. Did you want ordinance or?
Well, well, see, that's the other thing.
Not anymore because we're rolling it in, right? It would seem a little less onerous, I suppose.
Ordinance or, or maybe section or something.
Section.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it is part of the total ordinance, it's not a standalone, I don't believe it, correct?
Right.
So is wherever I see ordinance, change it to section?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In both the first line and the last line, yeah, makes sense.
Now, my question about definitions on the second page is, they're going to be up with all the rest of the definitions, correct? Or are they going to be in the back here under new heading? And if so, why?
The thought was they were going to be here in this section.
In the context.
Just as a quick reference for people, so they didn't have to go through the whole general index to find what they were looking for.
Yeah.
Lawsary, I mean.
I understand that, but we don't do that for anything else.
There was, I think we found a couple instances where we did do that. Where were they?
They probably did belong.
That might be true.
It's probably there.
But if you were looking for a definition, you'd go to the definitions.
Yeah, that's fine.
We can do that.
That's probably.
I think it's just.
That was our thinking that happened.
No, I understand, because it makes sense, but there again.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think if we, if we try and keep everything the same that we add in the ordinance, I think overall it's just easier to deal with. Because this way we know all the definitions will be there.
Same kind of format.
I'm trying to remember what to see if there was any redundancies between the two laws or anything.
Uh, I think there might be, I didn't.
Because these ones, these definitions might be a little more specific to stormwater than the other definition we have, so we'll dig a little, you know, cross-judge it again.
I apologize because I didn't, uh, I didn't go through, I looked at a couple last time, but I didn't look at all the rest of them.
Oh, well, he's talking about the.
Arthur, I have a quick, quick, uh, something to.
Impervious surface is different.
Keep around for the purpose reworded. Uh, the purpose of this section is to establish minimum stormwater management requirements to safeguard water quality in all of the watersheds within that period.
Yeah, when I did, I, when I did it, similar to that. You know, the purpose is to establish minimum stormwater management requirements and controls to protect lake water quality and the environment and conserve the natural and cultural resources in town.
But more than just lake water, also rivers and streams too that are affected by this. So I think time is water quality, yeah.
Water quality in all the watersheds within that. It really is not watersheds to natural and cultural resources. That's just, you know.
Well, that's fishing pond.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Think that's a good sign.
But we don't, you know, it's a dag, because you don't really.
Yes.
We have no problem keeping definitions in definitions.
Alright, now, impervious surface, we've got two different ones here, which one do we want? And, well, first of all, you, you're taking out buffer area, or you're putting it somewhere else or including it for something else? Or we're just not going to?
Do we have an existing buffer area?
Uh, no, and we don't even say anything about buffer. Now, some of the, we don't put every word in here, because if we don't, then use a regular dictionary definition. A buffer is kind of a standard, you know, we know what a buffer is, it's a, a space that's set aside between this and this. So maybe we don't even need, that's probably why.
This is, that buffer area is within the February second.
Yes, yes, that's what this, that's what we're comparing.
Yeah.
Just those two, we're not comparing anything that's in the orange book.
Right.
Just the, yeah.
So they decided to take it off.
And it makes sense. Alright, so we've got t- two. We've got, actually, we've got three impervious definitions, whether it's disconnected, effective, or, and then just ordinary impervious. So what's the story behind all that?
Well, effective impervious area is the, impervious area, um, the total impervious area on the line would include, you know, your driveway, your roofs, um, um, patios, et cetera, et cetera, minus, um.
You're disconnected.
Disconnected. Disconnected is the stuff that is working on site already is kind of meeting LID, um, techniques, i.e. it's not, it's been, it's been disconnected from the normal runoff system in the lot.
So it's, it's doing something positive then?
Yes, it's in, it's already infiltrating, uh, the manner in which it's handled on the lot is already, um, well, well managed.
Control, yeah, it's controlling the runoff.
It's infiltrating.
Devices that are equally.
So it doesn't get addressed down the road then?
It's not considered part of the effect of impervious.
And the effect of impervious is what a stormwater management plan for that property would entail then?
Well, we, we like to get a small effective impervious. You know, get as much disconnected as you can.
Right, okay.
Your total always remains the same.
Right.
You get as much disconnected as you can, so that you can lower your effective.
Where this kicks in, uh, Chip, is when they, in the, in the more technical part of the document, when you're dealing with large commercial, uh, proposals, and they, they have some formulas that, that, uh, are basically ratios that these things have to be in, uh, relative to another, and, and that's where it's very helpful. Have a good working understanding of what these terms mean, it's, you know, it's a bit of new terminology.
Alright, what I'm wondering is, how about the definition for, uh, impervious surface? We, we've got yours on page three of, of the two thousand fourteen. And I don't think, or do we address it in the orange book?
Yeah, we have it definitely in the orange book already.
So, which one is better? That's the one we'll eat, well, let's find, figure which one's better.
Yours, sure. It's more to the point of what this section is dealing with, you know? It helps you to understand some of the other terminology maybe.
Yeah, it still includes common surfaces, so people have an idea what, what is we're talking about. Well, I'm fine with that, I'm fine with using the new one, crossing out the one in the orange book. But what I would like to do is throw disconnected and effective underneath impervious, out of their alphabetical order, but put all the impervious definitions in one spot versus running back to another page.
So this is, this is eventually going to be part of the.
Yes, it's going to be, yes, this is all going to be.
The definitions that are here are going to.
Yes, yes. I just think it works out better if we can have all the impervious ones in the same spot. Because they may end up being on.
How about this, you know, and I think we've done this in some, in some instances, under, under the letter D in, in the section of, of, uh, definitions.
Yeah.
You would have, in parentheses afterwards, C, impervious. you would have, in parentheses afterwards, C, impervious cover, comma, disconnected, just so that.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, fine, 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 that's good.
Now say that again, under.
Under, under the term disconnected impervious cover.
Right.
We're proposing to have in parentheses, C, impervious surface, comma, disconnected.
Okay, and with that, that.
Same for effective, and same for total.
Okay, same for effective.
Yeah, that's perfect, and because they're new, it would just be the underlying definitions. You know, we're not dealing with any cross outs yet, until we get rid of our old impervious thing. So, yeah, yeah, that's.
Effective and total?
Yeah. Total is self-explanatory, maybe we don't need.
I don't even see total.
Effective and disconnected.
Unless you.
Unless, yeah, yeah, he meant effective and disconnected.
That's all we need, those two.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me raise a point with Gavin. Would it be helpful in the understanding of these terms to say total, under the definition for total impervious area, total impervious area equals the sum of EIA and DIC. In other words, it includes the disconnected and the affected.
Um, but you already, you already state that in the definition for effective. Effective impervious area is the total impervious surface area, less the area of disconnected impervious cover.
So you're already going to need it?
I don't think so, no.
I'm happy.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll be all set with that. All right, so. I, again, I don't know, there's other ones that, I think a lot is a new. I'm sure it'll be. Nine point source, do we have that there or does that? Non-conforming, no, all right, so we'll get it there.
That's a term that's useful, huh?
Oh, absolutely, oh, no, no, I understand we need that. And we've never addressed permit by rule. Is it an instruction by permission transportation rate?
We struck permit by notification because it was an extra terminology.
And Paul was quite adamant that the applicant, when, when they are working their way through this section, understands the safeguards that they will have to, the qualifications they'll have to make. That's why he was quite adamant to include information about the process, so to speak.
You mean the permit by rule one?
Yeah, that's why, kind of why that's included.
Well, that's fine. Redevelopment, I don't exactly. How is it? It must be used in here somewhere, huh?
Yeah, that's the, that's the one section that we were suggesting when we were speaking of this early on, that would be moved to the site review section of our existing ordinance. Because it's, again, it's pertinent only to commercial, industrial, institutional, multifamily residential. And it's kind of, there's some complexity to it, but when you understand the terminology of the impervious areas, it's quite easy to explain. And I am still working on my Venn diagram.
I saw the picture there. You know how tough it is to make diagrams inside something like this?
I think color makes it. It's a two-part graph, it's pretty easy.
You don't, you're just preparing either. No, just write that. So, vegetated buffer. Water quality. Super. Anyone have any other questions or issues with definitions? We've only got two pages left.
What did we decide on buffer?
What?
If we can use the buffer.
Uh, I think we should, yeah.
Okay, all right. In which, you can use vegetated buffer without having a definition of buffer?
Sure, because they can look up buffer addition, that's what they're for. Or they can go online. Isn't that what the kids do nowadays? W W W, whatever it is. Applicability. Five twenty-five, two, one, three. Now. So, number one then. Okay, all new development or just new development? How would, how would this sentence start in number one? I guess all new development, including construction or expansion of, uh, it's something, of a, including construction or expansion of a structure.
Why did you strike in existing structure?
Uh, because I think they've. Construction.
Because it's new.
Well, it's a given that's an existing.
Yeah, they're just trying to make a thing shorter, rather than of new and existing, they just said any structure. So they're making it, they're making it more succinct, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, I can, all we want to do is throw an "of" in there. Any sub-projects that is exemplified, ex, what? Is that what that is, exemplified?
Yeah, that's a good word.
I know it's a good word, is that, is that how it's?
Is it a good definition of that?
No, I just wonder if we're using it right here. Again.
I don't care, it's, it exemplifies the amplification.
Oh, okay. And there's nothing better than defining a word, using a word, right? Any sub-projects that are defined to below.
Yeah, it's not really exemplified below, it's defined below.
Oh, that's what I was thinking. Uh, if it meets the literature clues. New or expansion, did you have that mentioned?
Paul, what if somebody is going to reduce some sort of project that makes an existing structure smaller? Is going to be disturbance involved to do it?
That's a good question.
You mean knocking something down?
Yeah, or, you know, for whatever reason, making a deck or patio smaller, or whatever. Is, do you want it to just apply to expansions, or do you want it to apply to any?
Well, they say construction or expansion.
It might come up in exclusions, I'm not exactly sure. But the, there are triggers in this in terms of levels of disturbance. So my hunch is it would either be below the radar in terms of levels of disturbances, and/or it might be covered in exclusions, I don't quite remember.
It'll probably be caught by number two, that's why we have a number one, and then number two in applicability, right? Because number one is incidental, non- incidental, non- incidental. And then number two is whether, whether or not it means, whether it means a threshold or disturbance or not, we'd still like them to do these techniques when they.
Yeah, what you're.
Put these projects into.
The techniques. Just as an overview on this, on this bit of, on this section, as you, as we're all aware, currently, we don't really have a handle on the things that we, we work with Kenny on the best possible location permits. We say, Kenny, can we, can you, can you suggest that they do this, or can you rescind them to York County Soil and Water? This, this is basically saying, and it's based, the science is based on, is that the phosphorus levels in the lake, we're still struggling with that. So as development increases, and there's more, you know, bigger rainstorms we're getting, we need to have a little better safeguards, and the voluntary nature, the way it's been run in the future, doesn't seem to be sufficient to maintain water quality. So it's time, in the process of things, to say to folks, the folks that are not maybe going out and seeking the help of York County Soil and Water, or the AWOL people, or the Youth Conservation Law, that now they have to. The water quality, the maintenance of the water quality is everybody's business.
That's, yeah, that's not, what I was, what triggered my thinking was a little bit when you, when you mentioned best possible location, is that we.
What are you saying, if somebody does a small project?
If somebody wants to do a smaller, for whatever reason.
Well, if they still disturb that amount of ground footage, you know, the 500 square feet or the.
But number two says new or expansions?
Yeah, if you're, if you're decreasing something.
Oh.
I guess, as long as you're not.
But there's no, there's no, if you're, if you're increasing it, then you would be required to do some mitigation. But if you're decreasing it, there's still going to be some disturbance of ground. There's, there's going to be some, maybe some open.
On vegetated area.
And so there's no requirement in that case to do any mitigation?
I don't know, but I think it's just because it says new or expansion of, so it's like if they're, they tore off a 20 by, you know, 10 deck, and they put a 10 by 10 deck, it's still a new deck. I mean, I think that's kind of what this is handling.
I think it also may be covered, partially in the exclusions, I have.
Well, yeah, well, maintenance is covered.
Like if you had a lawn and you wanted to be, create a overeat, vegetated buffer comprised of native plants versus grass. That's kind of what you're getting at, right?
Or if they have a paved walk going down to the.
And they want it to lay, they want to remove it.
Right.
Well, I consider that construction.
I didn't think it would be new, because, I mean, then if, you have different problems when you have a crushed stone path as opposed to an asphalt path. I mean, there's still going to be water.
Yeah, but tearing up the concrete or the asphalt, you could put in some kind of drage if you want to.
It's convenient how to do it.
Oh, yeah, but I consider construction to be adding on to something or taking something away, it's some kind of work done to something. And if you've got a 25 by 10 deck, and you cut it off 10 feet, so that's 10 by 15, you've still done some work to it. And, you know, so, and they've got construction up here, and, and one, you know, many, including construction or expansion. So I, I think we're covered there.
Well, like, what about if Iron City was to take down a couple of those big buildings out back, or?
Right, that's. Well, yeah, all right, if you want to. Construction demolition or expansion. Want to throw demolition in there?
I see a point, that's another.
Yeah, and that's, that's even, that really brings it home too. Because, yeah, what if they do want to knock down, somebody wants to knock down an ugly old, uh, building on their property? And it's within shoreline, and we want the ground beneath it addressed. And they're not going to build anything on it. So maybe we should throw construction, demolition, or expansion.
Or under exclusions, this one might be one we'd run up the flag with Kenny, but under exclusion, maybe something. I mean, let me ask you a question first, would you want, you want Kenny to have a review over those kinds of things, or should they just go by the board? What I was going to say, under exclusion, but it may be too big of a loophole, might be added alterations which result in a diminished.
Or you could just say alterations, you don't.
We don't want them to be excluded, though, if they're ripping up 2,000 square feet with their excavator to take down one, move one item around, I mean, you still want them to be aware that the area is not vegetated anymore.
Currently, they'd have to get a permit to do an alteration. And there would be some conditions in terms of potential runoff, you know, from that project, like, you know, with its barriers, or hay bales, or whatever the, well, the project's ongoing. There'd be a requirement maybe to reseed or something like that, it might. So is it currently adequately addressed for that type of situation?
Under exclusions, is you're thinking that anything that meets these criteria don't need to do anything additional for runoff maintenance?
Yeah, because they, most of them say, and the site is not significantly altered, the existing runoff pattern should remain unchanged. But that sticks with a lot of these.
All right, all right.
I think that was the original thinking from Gavin. Just to kind of get people, this is where we give people a little bit of a break on the norm stuff.
Maybe that would, I think, would that do it, the, and, because it would be ultimately a CDO judgment call.
Yeah, you're not trying to satisfy me, I just, it was a thought that I had about.
Well, I think we should think about it, we can either add demolition in, or maybe we should look and see if it's already addressed and not sort of part in the existing zone, right?
Yeah, but if we're, if we're first presenting it here, we should put everything that we include right here. You know, plus, minus, or indifferent.
Between applicability and exclusion.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about a period number one. If we say, yeah, if we throw, you know, construction, demolition, or expansion. And no offense, but I'd like to change exemplified to define. Well, it's just simpler for me to pronounce.
I've never, I've never said that word in my life.
Usually it meets whole to a higher standard or something, anyway.
In the next section, there are levels of disturbance, it has a much broader applicable.
Times, can we just put our hands around what, the language change then?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, like, why are we using a more general description like it's here, if we're wanting to include anything that would be creating a disturbance?
Well, that's almost like a definition.
There's two, one is dealing with impervious surfaces, am I right? And the other is dealing with disturbance of land, which are not necessarily the same thing.
So under applicability, we just look at impervious, impervious surfaces?
Applicability deals with.
Does it apply to all new development within the following zones?
No, applicability is not, not the work, it's the location.
Right.
Really? Levels of disturbance is where we get into the nature of the work.
And that's, and that's. Our incidental disturbance and all that kind of jazz comes into effect. kind of jazz comes into effect, and I get it, I get it. Are we good with exclusions on the bottom of page five?
Cause, cause it, if you, if you just drew the lines on five point two, five point two, point one, point three, after commercial.
Where?
How do you want to read?
Oh, he's just saying, just chalk one and two right about.
Oh, really?
Applicability, drill and resource, commercial.
And that's the end.
B, commercial B on there, just it's commercial.
That's right, commercial B.
So it's a double. And the crossed out one is just commercial B?
Well, it is all. Yeah.
Yeah, actually, it's gonna be done.
Cause that does talk about applicability, and these other, one and two, more or less define what we're saying in the first sentence, you know, the stormwater ordinance. I mean, new development is, both those are defining new development within the following zones, and new development is anything, tearing something down, adding something, expanding something, it's something new, if you're taking something away, it's still a new imperative. So maybe we should just leave applicability, that very first sentence, the stormwater ordinance, blah, blah, A, B, and C, now, do we need commercial B or just commercial?
Commercial B.
Commercial B, so throw a B behind that, and maybe we can be done with applicability, huh?
Yeah, because you're done there.
Cause, cause one and two then kind of go beyond, they give more of the descriptions.
Right.
Fleshing it up.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's to the point of explaining to the applicant a little more in detail, the nuts and bolts of this thing. I, I would just ask you to consider whether someone coming new to the process of, you know, abiding by zoning requirements, if that would help them or would hinder them in their understanding of it. The reason that it's in there is because we thought of it.
I think, I don't think somebody who's new to the, this process is gonna be doing this on his own anyway, and a buck says he's not gonna be reading this, his contractor will do it, or he'll come in and talk to Ken, and Ken will explain it to him. I, I think, again, the more words we put out in front of them, we may muddy the waters a little bit, and to be honest, applicability, one and two don't deal with applicability, they're defining the term, and that's a whole different thing. So I think we can probably do without those, seriously. I mean, if somebody has a hard time with this, then they'll ask for help, they'll go online, they'll come and go to enforcement, Brandon can straighten them out. But I don't know, we might do this for the lowest common denominator, we're dealing with high school graduates in this town, they know this stuff.
Should we beat up new development a little bit, though, in that first line?
No, we're saving that.
Oh, first.
Yes, that's, I, to Joel, the oldest point, I, I think it, it, it flushes out the notion of, well, what do you mean by new development? And you go down to line one, or section one, maybe.
If it references levels of disturbance.
Right, I mean, we're trying to bring you through this thing step by step, and, and to your, uh, understanding how it's gonna be implemented. Um, I, I would ask that you, we just kind of study them a little bit more, maybe before we throw that baby out.
Fine.
We could, we could find part of one off of that, you know.
I've never seen you use that language in.
It's always been under the table, in choir. Exclusions, how's that look? I love it, what's the next? Wake up there, cameraman.
Oh, I'm up.
We don't gotta go down to, uh, levels of disturbance, cause I think that, that kind of, that's a natural starting point there, I, I would suggest, we just go down to F.
Oh, but you got a hot date?
Uh, nope.
It's only quarter after eight.
I, I wanna go to bed, and I wake up morning fresh, without living.
So we're good with exclusions, no ones we have any issues with that, like it the way it is? Commit to the prayer?
Next, next meeting, we will, let's, let's find a goal for the next meeting.
How about levels of disturbance?
We'll do the best.
Yeah.
See, boy, this is the. I would suggest we, we stop at the top of page twelve, I'm gonna make, make it, redevelopment is where it gets a little, uh, sticky.
Yeah, this is a lot, I was thinking we should stop at the middle of ten, go up to general design. Because we've got all the answers down, we've got all the disturbance stuff, incidental and non-incidental, we gotta make sure those are clear to everybody.
Okay, general design is good.
Yeah, I said, yeah, I said we go up, up to, uh, we don't do general design, we'll go up to there, how's that? So the middle of six to the middle of ten. For the next meeting, this is, first meeting, ladies.
And you, what are you looking for, will these show up in the minutes, or do you wanna wait until it's all done?
No, no, just say we discuss.
Just discuss.
Just keep track of what we're discussing.
So you will wanna clean up version of one through six for the next meeting?
No, you're kidding, no, you're not.
You have a person, no, in the.
Yes.
I think that happens, although I crossed out part that we're gonna revisit, right? We're gonna revisit.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. That's why I use pets.
I haven't worn that since I was young.
Alright, so we'll meet before we take the site off.
Well, we can, we need, there's a pretty convenient place to park right at this site block.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm just trying, I'll have a meeting before that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We won't have a meeting.
What is the next?
Why not?
It's the first, first meeting in all.
Seven, seven, seven.
You're looking for twelve, so I'll have to, I'll have to post it.
Yes, 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 post it, you know, start with the papers tomorrow or something. And notify the letters.
We do?
Yes, because they may wanna be there when we have the site locked.
All the letters?
There's only half a dozen, right?
Okay, you wouldn't?
Yeah.
So I can just send them the notice?
Yep, yeah.
Everybody would to the paper last year.
Legally, if they spread money, they own a piece of the.
Don't forget our hiring deals. They gotta be in the clutch form, you know, wanna go to hiring.
We only moved the weird chair, but I stuck it.
So they give you the minutes.
Does anyone have anything else? We're not capable of.